Welcome, everyone. It is April the 17th, 6 o'clock, and we'd like to begin this work session. Before we begin this work session, let me just say a few things, and then we'll get right into our work session. During this work session, there will be no decisions made by anybody. There will be no votes on anything. We're here to listen, to get input from everyone that's here. We are looking forward to that. There's going to be some, I'm sure, great ideas from all of you. Now, and also, of course, we want to hear the concerns, and there will be a chance for that. As we begin every work session, we have what we call "public comments" at the beginning and at the end. Now, for this work session, we're asking for the public comments at the beginning to be on non-agenda items, which is not related to the item that we have before us today. At the end, we're going to listen to everyone and anyone that wants to make comments to us. We'll stay here as long as you want to stay, and we'll be glad to gather all this information. Now, many of you have received comment cards, and this is available for you to write down your thoughts, your ideas, your concerns, or whatever. We have also received a petition that's been signed by several people with some great ideas there for us to consider. This room, obviously, is full. We have also made available downstairs the computer room, where there is a live feed there. Also, the break room is available with a live feed and the jury room. Now, my guess is we'll probably, like, if we fill this room, we'll probably fill those rooms. However, this is also being broadcast live on Facebook and on whatever channel it is on television, so you're welcome to, you know, tell whoever that they can watch this thing live from there, and they can also bring their comments to us. Now, there is a sign-up sheet, and this is for the second, for the second public comments period. We're going to take it in the order in which people have signed in to the public comments there. And again, we're going to start this meeting when we do the public comments for items that are not related to the topic right now. And the reason for that is there's going to be lots of information that's going to be presented to us, and maybe this will help you kind of formulate some of your thoughts to bring to us. So, again, we're looking forward to this. We appreciate you, we appreciate your thoughts, and we want to remind you that we don't want to have, let me tell you, I really believe that there's going to be a lot of support for a lot of ideas. We don't want to have the applause and all that, simply because we want to make everyone feel comfortable in bringing their thoughts to us, and also to, you know, try to keep this open, and everyone feel like that they're welcome and they can make discussions. Again, thank you so much for your involvement. Thank you for your interest in this. It's very, it's very vital to our community, it's very vital to everything that we do. Our downtown is so important, and also, all the issues that you bring to us, parking, you know, the thoughts about how to maybe make some changes, whether we will or not, we don't know. We have not, we have not made any decisions, nor will we tonight. We're just gathering information. And then also, again, thank you for being here. We will begin this meeting, and what we're going to begin with, again, is public comments, and this is, anyone that has any comments on any item other than what's on the agenda for tonight. So, is there anyone that would like to come forward? When you do make public comments, at the beginning and the end, we're going to ask you to stay within five minutes. We're going to try to time you and remind you so that we don't go much beyond the five minutes when you make comments. So, anyone that would like to come forward before we begin the presentation on this work session tonight for non-agenda items? Okay? So, we'll begin. I think, City Manager, we have a presentation. Do you want to introduce that, or do you want to just let the-
Um, Mayor, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
So, referring to your cover sheet in the packet, a little bit of history, especially since we do have some newer members of council who may not have been present in previous years when the Third Street median project was discussed. So, historically, as you know, the city council have requested a work session on parking downtown. In addition, the city council and the Laramie Main Street Board have previously approved medians to be placed in Third Street. Staff at the city were directed to finalize that design for those medians, working with YDOT. And the medians that were envisioned are what we would call kind of bookend medians, so there would be one on the south end of downtown, on Third Street, and one on the north end, and sort of welcoming visitors as they come into the community, and having the medians with beautification in them, really demarcating, "You're in downtown Laramie. Come on in, come shop, we're open for business." So, city staff have been working with YDOT to finalize that design. Last fall, we received concerns from a number of businesses who were dissatisfied with the location of the medians, particularly the location of medians as obstructing certain intersections along Third Street. So, in, in working through that situation with those businesses, we are going to talk to you tonight about the location of the medians, which is slightly different by about a half block than what you've previously seen and approved, and I would reiterate, both city council and the Main Street group have already approved and directed these medians to be placed. So, the medians and their existence isn't really the question tonight. As part of the city staff finalizing the design and location of those north and south bookend medians in Third Street, we realized that there's a significant removal of parking on Third Street that is required in order to accommodate the medians. And so, staff began investigating whether we can mitigate the loss of parking on Third Street by creating additional parking on the east-west side streets that cross Third Street. Does that make sense? So, that's how we ended up here tonight. When the engineering staff went back and really looked at our traffic patterns and roadway configurations in generally the downtown area, and I realize that the Main Street district is larger than just coming to Third Street, it actually goes across Third to the east, but for purposes of our conversation tonight, the focus was really on downtown sort of proper, what we all sort of think of as the downtown area, so Riffley-Clark Street, down to Sheridan and encompassing Second and First Street. What the engineering staff are going to present to you tonight are some concepts that reveal to us that the loss of parking on Third Street, because of the median beautification, can in fact be offset completely, so there would be net zero loss of parking to our downtown business district, and in fact, through some different roadway configurations, we could actually increase parking in the downtown business area, depending on what you do. So, the engineers are going to present to you a couple of design options. I would caution you, though, there are probably dozens of design options, but for purposes of just starting the conversation this evening, we felt that it was important to put a couple ideas out there. I'll also mention to you that we did collaborate with Main Street on this. We have met, not myself, but the Public Works Department Chief Operating Officer, have met now on four occasions with Laramie Main Street, three times with City, Main Street staff, the Director Trey Sherwood and Carly Anne Carruthers, and then also Chief Operating Officer and myself attended a Main Street Board meeting. As you know, we invited them to participate in this meeting tonight, hoping that this would be a joint meeting with the Laramie Main Street Alliance. So, the staff there have seen the presentation, and we actually incorporated information provided to us from Laramie Main Street into this presentation. So, any questions before I turn it over to the technical folks?
Counsel, any questions for our City Manager before we go to the presentation? Counselor Pierce?
I don't think I, I don't have a question, but I'm wondering if we should remind the crowd about, it's actually a highway, it's actually a YDOT.
State highway.
Thank you, I'd be happy to do that. So, I think everyone knows, but if they don't, Third Street is a state highway, it's not a local road. YDOT is a great partner in owning and managing that road, and they work with us. The medians being installed in Third Street would be done as part of a pavement preservation project that Main, excuse me, that YDOT has already planned. It's not an extensive reconstruction of the street like we saw up on Grand Avenue, where we have the medians now up near, say, Unowayo, Taco Bell, that area. This is a much smaller mill and overlay project that will preserve pavement. However, YDOT was a good neighbor and said, "We would like to work with you to install beautification elements as were requested by the public through the comprehensive plan that the city has adopted." So, we've been engaged with them, and, you know, as you know, 321 Main Street, 321 Third Street, steady working with Main Street, YDOT's been at the table the whole time. They're very amenable to the installation of the medians and deferential to our local preference to have that kind of beautification element in that state highway, just like they were up on Grand Avenue. But this is not as extensive, it'll be smaller medians, but still a really nice addition. Does that help, Counselor Pierce? Is that what you were hoping for?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for our City Manager? Let me make another comment. During city council meetings, after every item that we deal with in city council meetings, we invite the public to participate, and they do. So, it goes to the council, to the public, back to the council, and then to a vote. In work sessions, so that we can get through difficult agendas or get through the agenda that we have, it's not interactive with the audience. It's, we're, you know, we take notes, write down everything you can, and then again, like I said, at the end, we have a listening time where we will listen to your comments, we're not going to do back and forth with you or any of that, because that would not be appropriate for the city council to do. We have not made our decisions, we're, we're simply gathering information, we're listening. Hopefully, you'll be able to listen and get some great ideas, too. I will say this, we, we anticipate, because of your interest in this and the passion that you have for this, we anticipate a lot of great ideas. It's already been mentioned by our City Manager that we, there's dozens of possibilities, maybe even more than that. We'll consider everything, and then, in the final decision together, we're going to come up with something that's going to be beneficial for everyone. We have no plans to do anything but improve everything we can in the downtown with your interest, input, and cooperation. So, anyway, with that, we're going to, are you ready now to go into the presentation? And again, this is just going to be, we'll go through this, once our presentation's completed, then we're going to go again to public comments.
Mayor, our city engineer, not the city engineer, one of our city engineers, Eric Milliken, will make the technical presentation for you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Eric. Welcome. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Eric Milliken. I've been a traffic engineer with the city of Laramie for a few years now. I've lived in the city of Laramie community now for over 10 years, and I just want to start by, I just want to start going through just kind of what we came up with, the two options that we're going to show you today for one-way streets downtown. And it's important to remember that these are concepts. Of course, like you mentioned, Mayor, nothing of this is finalized, this is a general idea of how to increase the capacity for parking in the downtown area. And so, the two options we looked at is making all of the streets downtown one-way streets. This creates the most significant impact for increasing parking in the area. And short of building a parking garage, this will give you the most parking spots in the downtown area. And option two would be to look at making all of First Street and all of Second Street a one-way street in the downtown area. This would still give you a significant amount of parking spots, but it would not give you as much as the first option mentioned. After I go through our design for one-way streets, I'll have a pause in the middle of it, because there'll be a lot of information, and I'll, I'll ask you guys if you have any questions, City Council, if you have any questions regarding the design of the one-way streets. And then after that, we'll go into Third Street median design, and we'll talk about what changes we made to that and how it relates to 321 Third Street and downtown Main Street Alliance. And then after that, I will open it up for you guys to ask questions again, City Council, and then my presentation will be over.
Eric will try to do that for you, so that you can have a smooth presentation, but if we need clarification, there may be a short interruption, but our plan is to do what you've asked us to do.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine. So, to start off, Laramie Main Street Alliance, they conducted a study back in 2006 with a significantly larger study area than what we looked at. Their study looked at between First Street and Sixth Street, and between Sheridan Street and Clark Street. Now, in this particular study area, the study showed that there were about 1,700 on-street parking spots, that's within our right-of-way, and 1,900 off-street parking spots off of the, off of our right-of-way in public and private parking areas. However, the Main Street survey that was most recently conducted noted that the number one concern from people who use downtown is parking availability. And so, as, one-way streets are one way to do this, but working with Laramie Main Street, we've also come up with other ideas that we can also explore in terms of signs, shared lots, wayfinding improvements, education on where, where are the best places to park and time between parking lots and certain destinations, exploring carrot incentives, rewarding people, rewarding employees and owners for not parking right in front, out in front of their businesses, enforcement, improvements to the existing parking lots, just trying to make those off-street parking lots as high in capacity as possible, and then advocating for the preservation of Third Street parking. So, as Janine said, City Council directed staff to look at parking in the downtown area. Now, as we mentioned before, parking can increase with one-way couplets, and I'll get into more detail of that in future slides, of course, but there are some design restrictions that we'll also have to go over, and what restricts us from designing these in our streets today. So, the one-way couplets, our particular study area was between Clark Street and Park Avenue, and on First Street and Second Street. And this particular concept that we're looking at is a signing and striping-only option, which is very cost-effective. Signing and striping is the cheapest thing you can do to try and improve your streets, and so, it's a very low-cost option, and it's an, it's an easy op, option to implement, and it's an eas, an easy option to take away. So, if we were to implement this and try it out for a year and receive very negative community feedback from it, it'd be easy to go out there and remove the striping and the signage that we had put up for it, and go back to the original striping that we had in place. The one-way couplets also allow for enhanced pedestrian improvements, bulb-outs, raised crosswalks, and tabletop intersections. These help provide visibility for pedestrians in the downtown area, and it helps traffic calm in the area for vehicles driving through the downtown area. This also could help us expand opportunity for placemaking. This is in front of businesses where we need six feet for ADA multidirectional access, and right now, city sidewalks in the downtown area are between 12, 14 feet, which, accounting for six feet for the city needs for their right-of-way, only provides between five and seven feet for a business to use for their own purpose, which is not a lot, especially if the business is a restaurant that would like to expand their seating out into the right-of-way for outdoor seating. And these pedestrian improvements I've been talking about, like bulb-outs, raised crosswalks, they're supported by the City of Laramie Comprehensive Plan and the Downtown Main Street Alliance Plan. So, we did our research, and there's a lot of good and a lot of bad for one-way streets. We just listed a few here, and I'm not going to go through all of them. I just listed them here as a reference, if you would like to reference them later. Just know that there's articles that have positive cases of one-way streets in downtown areas, and some that have negative. For City of Laramie in particular, we know that these couplets can increase the parking for downtown customers. They can also, in some spaces, provide larger parking spaces for downtown customers. We know that's a complaint with the two-way traffic and diagonal parking on either side. We know it can get a little tight sometimes, especially with bigger vehicles using the downtown area, and so, in some places, we could actually provide larger spaces for these vehicles while providing a safe place for vehicles to drive through downtown. And with future bulb-outs and future improvements, concrete and asphalt-wise, we can improve the multimodal use of the area with bicycle and pedestrians. And so, there is some challenges in implementing one-way streets. One thing we will need to do is, we will need to implement a lower speed limit to encourage people to go slower through these areas. Now, we don't believe people will be going fast through these areas anyways, because they don't currently, and so, if we find that they still are going faster, we can go and install traffic calming measures, which, in, in addition to helping visibility for pedestrians in the downtown area, they also help slow, encourage slow, vehicles to slow down in the downtown area. One thing we would also need to do is improve the navigability, especially if we're doing an all-streets one-way option, where every single street in downtown Laramie is a one-way street, the signage is going to have to be top-notch, and it's going to have to be able to guide people efficiently through the downtown Laramie area. But, a, and another, another important consideration will be to collect feedback, of course, from the community if we were to implement this, and that'll be important in, in deciding whether or not it should be kept in the future, or if we should go out and power wash the stripes off the, off the asphalt. But we have some things going for us for the city of Laramie downtown, is, one thing is shorter block sizes for one-ways, like big cities, like city of Denver, where the one-way is five lanes wide. You see block sizes that are thousands of feet wide, which can cause some pretty long travel times to loop around to try and circle your destination. For the city of Laramie, with our shorter block sizes in our downtown area, this is an advantage for us, shorter, shorter distances to our destinations, and easier to loop around to try and find a parking spot. Another concern we hear from these studies is that one-ways create super speedways through downtown areas, thereby causing potential customers to drive by, drive-by businesses. And we, we don't think that's, that would be the case, especially for First and Second Street in this particular downtown area. This, this comment would be valid for a Third Street or Fourth Street couplet, where Third Street and Fourth Street, their main priority today is to move vehicles from the south of Laramie to the north of Laramie and vice versa. So, by taking away the two-way and turning those into one-ways, thereby, people who are trying to go from south to north or from north to south have an easier time doing that, thereby bypassing businesses. However, with First and Second Street turning them into one-ways, First and Second Street are local roads. They don't, excuse me, they, they, they are not used by vehicles to travel through Laramie. They're used as a destination, local roads. The purpose of a local road is to accommodate vehicles looking for their destination, and so, we don't believe people will be using Second Street to go through downtown. We believe they will be using Second Street, as they always have, to try and find a parking spot to get their downtown destination. And so of our, so some of our design restrictions for these one-way streets, starting with the International Fire Code, International Fire Code states that "A fire apparatus access road shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet." And so, all of these roads in Laramie obviously need to have fire access, because they all access buildings, so they all need to be, each driveway width needs to be at least 20 feet wide. And around hydrants, where a hydrant is located on a fire apparatus road, the minimum road width shall be 26 feet. And so, well, we're lucky in downtown Laramie, hydrants are located on the corners, so that is not as big of an issue as if it were located at the midpoint of the, the block of downtown. So, those are the design restrictions in terms of fire code. Minimum bicycle lane width, we looked at adding bicycle lanes, but five feet for bicycle lane would not fit anywhere on any of these cross-sections, and so, we've added sharrows as part of our striping plan. The asphalt width, since we're looking at a signing and striping plan only, we have to look at how much asphalt width we have to deal with in order to stripe with. And in downtown Laramie, between Clark and Park Avenue, that ranges from 52 to 35 feet, and even one block that's only 30 feet. So, we have to take that into consideration. And other design restrictions, the Laramie Unified Development Code states that a parking bay for a vehicle has to be 20 feet long at a minimum. So, a parallel spot, 20 feet long along the curb. So, what does that mean for diagonal spots? So, if we take our 20-foot diagonal spot with a 45-degree angle, which is a minimum for diagonal parking, we do some trigonometry, we find out that the minimum cross-sectional width we need to accommodate a 45-degree, 20-foot parking spot is 14 feet. And so, this is the variation in asphalt widths we see around the city of, city of Laramie downtown, and I'll just start with the biggest one and the most common one, which is 52 feet. And, kind of tough to see, but, so we have our 20-foot lane going down the middle, that's for fire access, we need that minimum. So, 52 minus 20, that gives us 32 extra feet to play with for parking. Easy to do, split that into two. We have two 16-foot lanes for parking, diagonal parking in that area. So, a 16-foot diagonal parking lane, looking at it cross-sectionally, that'll give us about a 24-foot-long diagonal parking spot for larger vehicles in all of these green areas. Moving on, a less common one is a 48-foot, which is in the yellow areas, which is, this is on the south side of downtown Laramie, between Custer and Park Avenue on Second Street and on Kearney Street. This is a 48-foot asphalt width. With just striping, we could do the 20-foot lane down the middle for fire access, which would leave us 14 feet on either side for diagonal parking, which is the minimum, as we discussed before, for a 20-foot, 45-degree parking bay. The next smallest would be these four blue blocks on the south end of Laramie downtown, which is a 44-foot width, asphalt width, and we have our 20-foot lane, again, down the middle, but we cannot accommodate two diagonal lanes on either side, 48 feet is the minimum. So, with 44 feet, we can put diagonal parking on one side, and we can accommodate parallel parking on one side, on the other side, and that's how we would have to design just these four blocks. And finally, 35 feet and 30 feet are the, are mostly on First Street. Between University Avenue and Grand Avenue, we see 35 feet with diagonal parking and a one-way 20-foot street, which it is how it is currently striped. And so, these areas are, have their maximum capacity for parking already because of their narrow asphalt width. We cannot add any more parking between University and Grand Avenue, and between Grand Avenue and Garfield, it's a narrow 30 feet, which can only accommodate one lane of travel and a parallel spot. A diagonal spot cannot fit in this location, so the First Street between University Avenue and Garfield Street will remain the same under this plan. However, the darker orange between Garfield Street and Park Avenue, excuse me, is all parallel spot, parallel parking currently. But this is where we would see most of the gain in parking in this area, especially on First Street, is between Garfield Street and Park Avenue. By converting parking from parallel to diagonal on this long stretch of road, we stand to gain a significant amount of spots just in this area, right next to the train depot. And so, it's tough to see, but this is what all streets are one-way couplets option would look like. So, you have First Street going in the same direction it's going now, Second Street going north, Grand Avenue going west into town, funneling traffic from Third Street and Grand Avenue east into the downtown area, Iverson and Garfield going east, and that's an important thing to note when you're designing one-way couplets. If you have two one-ways next to each other on a block, they cannot be going the same direction, they have to complement, or they have to be the opposite direction of each other. So, you can't have Grand Avenue and Iverson both going west into downtown, one of them has to be going the opposite direction. But that's pretty much the only rule of thumb when designing these couplets in general. And so, when we look at the parking capacity for these areas, existing and proposed, we see that the proposed, for all streets, one-way couplets would add about 92 spots to the downtown area. Now, compared to the existing, this would be an increase of about 13%. And it's important to note, this is the most significant option for this area to increase parking. This is, if you want to increase parking in this area, this is the most significant option to get the most parking out of it. And so, zooming in on this area to kind of give you a better view of what it would look like, diagonal spots converting to parallel on First Street over there by the depot, and on the right side of the screen there, you can see University Avenue. If you want to know what it would feel like to have diagonal parking on either side and a one-way street going down the middle, we have a perfect example here in the city of Laramie. It's University Avenue between First and Second Street. So, it's, it's not uncommon, and we definitely have an example of it here in Laramie. Now, as part of 321 Third Street's plan, which I'll talk about later, they have left-turn restrictions during peak hours on Third Street as part of the YDOT plan for their renovation of Third Street. And so, what these limited peak hour signs would look like is an LED sign mounted on the mast arm that would only be active during peak hours, say, during, between 7:30 and 8:30, or between 4:30 and 5:30, maybe during the lunch hour. And so, comparing that to our plan for all streets are one-way couplets, and how that would affect lift, left-turning restrictions from Third Street, there'd be the same number, however, ours would be every other block on Iverson, Garfield, and Kearney, and it would be, it would be all, it would be active all the time, as opposed to during the peak hours, obviously, because they would be one-way streets. So, the second option we looked at, not as extreme, but it's First Street and Second Street are one-way couplets. So, all of the side streets, everything between Clark and Park, they still remain two-way streets. However, we turn, we expand First Street's one-way all the way to Park, and we turn Second Street into a one-way street between Clark and- and we turn Second Street into a one-way street between Clark and Fremont. And so this still gives you a significant amount of parking addition to the downtown area with 60 spots. But it's not, if it's not the most significant parking improvement you can make, because that would be the all-way, one-way couplets, which is the most extreme version, but it's also the most significant version to increase parking in the downtown area. And like we said, it's, there's a lot of different options you can go with, with one-ways to try and improve parking. Uh, we could just make First Street a one-way between University and Park Avenue. And that'd be alright, because everywhere else would be two ways and it'd be easy to access. And we'd see a significant amount of addition, a significant amount of parking added to the First Street area. Um, and there's a lot of ways we can configure this to meet the needs of the community. So what do these one-way couplets provide us as a city and as downtown? Well, we could, it can provide us in the future, uh, bull bouts, uh, large bull bouts for pedestrians to congregate. And the bull bouts also provide shorter walking distances between uh, between sidewalks, intersections, which is great, the, the less time you have a pedestrian in, in the street, the better, and so bull bouts can provide that. Uh, parklets, which businesses can use in front of their businesses to provide more of a flair in front of their business and more landscaping. Uh, the raised crosswalk intersection concept, which we talked about, is a, is a traffic calming measure as well as a pedestrian visibility feature that could uh, help reduce vehicle speed in the area as well as uh, make pedestrians feel more comfortable in the downtown area. Also, as I talked about before, the co- uh, extending concrete from the businesses out to the uh, edge of our right-of-way, we can give businesses more room. Uh, like I said before, the six feet for multidirectional ADA access is a requirement for city of Laramie. And, excuse me, and the um, and we have a, we've had a lot of requests from businesses to add part, uh, to add tables and chairs and uh, fences outside of their businesses for outdoor seating, which we're in favor for, but we cannot accommodate that if we don't have the six feet of parking of it, six feet of sidewalk available for the ADA access. And so this would help us, in the future, we could provide more space for them if needed. And so that's the, that's my presentation on just the one-ways. We still have Third Street and 321 medians to go. Um, so City Council, if you have any questions or comments, um, you can, you know.
Okay, anyone have questions for Eric? Uh, Councilor O'Doherty?
Uh, the raised crosswalk, I think you also called something tabletop?
Yes, a tabletop intersection, basically where you raise up the entire intersection from the crosswalk through the intersection.
So just, okay, the entire intersection?
Yeah, so imagine you're driving through the intersection and then, so for a raised crosswalk, that's easy to imagine, you just go over a bump in the road for the crosswalk. Uh, well, for a tabletop intersection, it would raise you up for the intersection. You drive through the intersection and then once you reach the other side of the intersection, it would drop you back down.
So, can I?
Go ahead.
So the raised crosswalk, if you're in a wheelchair crossing, you wouldn't have to go down a ramp and back up again?
No, it'd actually probably be better for uh, handicap and ADA, because then you wouldn't have a ramp going down into the street. You could keep the, you could keep the sidewalk at the same level.
Councilor Schuster?
Um, two questions. One, one of the first screens you talked about, talked about enforcement. Are we gonna do anything? I hate to say, some people live downtown, there are apartments over a lot of the businesses now. But if you look downtown, all the signs say that it is only so much time in a parking place. Have we discussed um, enforcement of it? They have a lot of programs now that would help make vehicles move.
I'll let Janine or Amelia discuss that.
That was on, I think, the second page of the presentation.
Correct.
And you have a follow-up.
Mayor and council, um, you're correct, and I think that was in the second page. Um, typically, I think, where we're dealing with a commercial or business corp, where a lot of people are invited in, customers, um, uh, employees of those businesses. And as we know, we've tried to grow residency in the downtown as well. So now we have people living down there who wanna park also. Um, these kinds of issues are not, you know, we're not the only town in the world with these issues, right? We could look at our neighbors to the south. I think what we were trying to um, state in that second slide, and again, a lot of that information is provided through Main Street. The solutions to these problems are multi-pronged and sometimes they are public solutions. But most often, the success, successful solutions involve public and private folks working together. So to the point of enforcement, um, we are enforcing. The chief's here, he has some enforcement statistics, but I wanna caution you, our intention was not to go uh, into that in great detail tonight, but it's certainly part of that dialogue and that multi-pronged approach. Um, the last thing I'll mention, especially for our newer council members, is um, last year, the city council, so I believe in 2017, or excuse me, maybe it was 18, anyway, the city council had a goal adopted to ask Laramie Main Street and the downtown uh, community to really look at parking and parking enforcement and to maybe bring us their thoughts, ideas and suggestions about how we could approach enforcement in the downtown, maybe differently. And to be candid, the conversations I had with the Main Street Director and with the Chair, or well, I don't think Chantel was the Chair at the time, but she was on the board, were really looking at technology solutions. There's an old-school way of enforcing, you know, sort of the meter maid concept or the concept where we have CSOs that are patrolling on foot. That's a pretty old-school approach. Um, it's a high expense to the public with a fairly low return. Um, there are so many better technological solutions for addressing parking enforcement. In fact, uh, technological innovations that are self-enforcing largely. Not that we wanna be like Jackson, but I'm just gonna say they have a robot. Um, and so we had invited Main Street and the downtown folks to maybe bring us some suggestions um, to what kind of solution they would like to see. Unfortunately, that didn't get any traction, but I would still assert that that is the kind of input and feedback that could be really valuable to the public side of this equation, to hear from our private folks, what kind of enforcement do you want? Um, do we wanna look at these technological solutions? There's a high cost of entry typically, right? Because you have to go up with the capital funds to install these systems, but they pay themselves back over time. And I can begin to go into how much diversity there is in this sector right now. The chief and I just probably six years ago researched this, there are some amazing options. So I think that's part of the equation, but we didn't wanna necessarily spend tons of time on that tonight, because what we have ticking over our head is a deadline from YDOT to give them some feedback on these median locations. And then we wanna continue the dialogue about the roadway design and the traffic patterns, um, if you want into the future. So did I answer your question or did I just give you way more than you ever wanted?
I was absolutely thinking about the robot one, although it still has a driver and records license plates and absolute GPS location. And if the vehicle sits there beyond the time limit specified on that street, it automatically even prints you out a ticket.
Yes.
So I felt that if we could get some people that are, I call camping downtown, that leave vehicles for days on end, that we need to try to make that so downtown people that wanna shop downtown can use those spots too.
Right, right.
Then my second question, like you said, was um, you said that we could have, uh, in the 45-degree angle, you talked about it accepting a longer vehicle. Well, I hate to say it, a crew cab, long bed pickup is up to 27 feet long. And when I have the biggest problem going downtown is trying to get around and somebody even out in the audience commented, yeah, and if you got them on the opposite sides, you have only less than one lane of traffic downtown. Are we gonna put a limitation on things?
I'm gonna pass the trigonometry question back to Eric.
We'll just throw you under the bus for that.
I mean, obviously it'd be tough to put a limitation on what could park in the downtown area. Uh, but we do see a problem with, with large vehicles parking on either side of the road on Second Street. And my only comment to that would be, at least you wouldn't have vehicles going in two directions. You'd only have vehicles going in one direction.
Okay, Vice, Vice Mayor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. In your presentation, it doesn't sound like there's much ability to provide for bicycles. Speaking for the bicycle community, I think that's so important that we have some kind of availability for bicycles downtown. Right now, it's very limited. Can you expand a little bit on that? Is there any kind of possibility to provide bicycle lanes?
Sure. So right now, with the uh, existing asphalt width that we have available to us, it is tough to, to accommodate bicycles. The, one of the options we've looked at is a shero, which is, which helps indicate that vehicles should share the road with the bicycles in this particular location, similar to what we have on Ninth Street next to the university. Uh, to, in order to get a bike lane in this particular area, unfortunately, you'd have to, uh, especially on Second Street, you'd have to change probably one side from diagonal parking to parallel to get that enough space to have a parking lane on one side of the road. And so that's um, that's one of the options. The shero is one option to indicate that vehicles can sh- share the road with the bicycles. Or there would be some parking that would have to be removed in order to accommodate a bicycle lane in downtown area.
Council, Councilor Harrington?
Um, thank you, Eric. Um, I'm curious, um, in the most complete plan, it seems like the majority of the parking, new parking, um, of those 92 spots would be located near Depot Park. And I would maybe assert that the lot at Depot Park is often available for parking. Um, that seems to be a fairly reliable place to find parking already despite us having kind of a shortage of parking. So I'm wondering if uh, if you happen to know how many of those 92 spots that we're creating are kind of in that, the real heart of downtown where the parking issue seems most significant? Sort of like between Garfield and Iverson. And then probably Second and First Street?
So you are correct, the significant amount of parking added is on First Street between, or in front of the depot, in the depot parking lot, uh, between Garfield and Park. There's also significant, significant added on Second Street where there is parallel parking for an entire residential block. Uh, the rest of the parking is sporadically added, uh, two or three spots on every corner where there's currently a parallel spot, if you know downtown Laramie. Every corner, there's a parallel spot with some yellow striping on either side of it. That'd be converted and that would add a couple of spots on each corner of Second Street and on the side streets that intersect that street.
Eric, would you direct them through that graph at the bottom? I'm not sure that we're tracking, it's broken down by block.
It's tough to see in the graph, but if you look at it, it's bolted there. It is broken out by street, um, or by street block, or yeah, by street, sorry. Cause it says First Street, Second Street. It's broken out by each street in the downtown area, how much each street is added to each street.
Thank you, Eric, I didn't see that.
That's right.
Councilor Doherty?
Oh, I just see you, um, used the term shero? Is that a sharing arrow for bikes and?
Correct.
Okay, alright, I think that's, was, went over our heads, yeah, shero.
Any other questions before we go into the second part of the presentation? Eric, go ahead.
All right. Continuing on, we'll now talk about 321 Third Street and kinda give you an update of where we are in this process, uh, particularly with the median design. Now, the 321 Third Street conceptual plan is a plan adopted by council and it includes bull bouts on Third Street, left-turn restrictions, as I talked about before during, just during the peak hour, and bookend medians, uh, as we will discuss today. The original design for the Third Street medians, as submitted to YDOT previously, has medians on Third Street on Carney and on Clark Street going through the Carney and Clark Street intersections. Now, the purpose of the medians going through the intersections and restricting movement is to allow more availability for beautification and entryway treatments um, to be put into the median. If they were, if the medians were put in between, they, they um, they, they have some restrictions because of sight distance issues with people who are looking to see oncoming traffic as they turn left onto Third Street. So our proposed medians as part of this 321 Third Street plan, we're gonna keep the Carney Street median the same, going through the Carney Street intersection. Uh, but we're going to move the north median at Clark Street up half a block. And the reason why we did this is because of feedback from local businesses. Uh, they were concerned with the restriction or the lim- the uh, the outright limit of their left-turning capability of the vehicles from Third Street would limit of the amount of business that went to their, to their, uh, to their business. And um, this, um, this limited left-turn lane, uh, we gave back as part of the revised median design. So we'll start with the southern median at Carney Street, going through the intersection, as you can see here. As part of YDOT's plan, in order to have the transition from a four-lane street with two parking lanes on either side to a four-lane street with a median in the middle, they need a transition of about 100 feet. And so that 100 feet starts to take away parking on Third Street to accommodate the median. However, we can gain some of this parking back if we were to add diagonal parking on the two-way street um, next to Modern Port Pit, uh, excuse me, Modern Printing or Star Awards. Uh, either side, it doesn't matter, in this ca- in this particular case, it's next to Modern Printing, but it can be easily moved to the other side of the street. Or with the one-way option, it can potentially double the parking in this area with diagonal parking being on both Modern Printing and Star Awards, right outside their businesses. Moving on to the north median, this is the current design for the north median. It goes through the Clark Street intersection. And our proposed design moves it a half a block north to between the Lewis Street and Clark Street intersection. By moving it a half-block north, we can provide a short turning lane, uh, a left-turn lane for vehicles on Third Street turning into, onto Clark Street. And this will help businesses up there, uh, retain their business. And the, it will still provide an entryway from the north to the downtown area. Now, it can't have as much beautification or uh, entryway treatments as the southern median, because it's, it, it's in the middle of the block and would obstruct any, uh, would obstruct sight distance. But there's still some room for some beautification, some entryway treatment. Uh, but we have to be a little more careful, uh, for the safety of the intersection as we go about designing the landscaping for this median. If we were to add parking back, we could do it on Fremont Street, uh, with a, on the two-lane, we could add diagonal parking, kitty-corner from each other, similar to how Iverson Avenue is set up now between First and Second, where there's diagonal on one side, parallel on the other, and then shifting sides where diagonal switches to the other side and then parallel goes to the other side. And the travel lane kinda snakes around it, uh, which would give us five additional spots. Um, and then on Fremont Street, for the proposed one-way, uh, adding diagonal parking in front of the subway there would give us an additional one-spot. And the only reason that is, is because the, the parallel spot is so short there that it only gives us one additional spot for that particular location. Uh, do you have any questions about the Third Street medians?
Any questions, Councilor Schuster?
Mine's, mine's a little off-center on that. On Clark Street where the bridge was, is that wide enough that we could put maybe some center diagonal parking in there? Or just to gain some spots? I hate to say during, uh, during certain events we have downtown, we could use another 20 spots there if where the bridge was taken out, because it's such a wide street over there. Then I almost wonder if we could put some diagonal parking in there to gain some.
We are looking at center island parking for Clark Street, that location. Unfortunately, we can't add any diagonal parking on the sides of the street just because of all of the accesses in the area, would not be worth it.
That's why I said center.
Uh, but yeah, the center, center is an option we are exploring currently with YDOT.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Eric? Okay, Eric, are you, does that complete your presentation?
That is my presentation.
Okay, thank you. City manager, is there more that we're, are we ready to start public comments?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, now, for those of you that have not had a chance to sign up for public comments, there's a list. It will be called, our city clerk will call your name as it's on this list. So if you wanna come up anytime, just come up and add your name to it. City clerk, do we have a name on there that we will start with? Maybe this is the first.
This will be the first. But you're age 12, yeah.
Now, when, when you start, again, you'll have five minutes. Give us your name and then uh, go ahead, make whatever comments you want to, welcome.
Well, thank you. My name is Rafael Delgado, and I have some property downtown on Third Street. And one of the things, I went to an earlier meeting that was held at the train station, YDOT was there. I've worked with California Caltrans, which is similar to YDOT, and they have the same concern, moving traffic. That's their basic concern. But what I see is a lot of inner-city uh, truck traffic coming off of 287 going to 30, and vice versa. And I proposed to them that we put a limitation on that. So that these trucks coming through don't have to ramble through the downtown, which is not as pedestrian-friendly then. And uh, they said no, they couldn't do it because they have to move traffic. Well, back in Oakland, California, where I come from, we developed the MacArthur Freeway, 580. And it's about 14 miles, it goes from the Caldecott Tunnel to San Leandro. It went through a total residential area and the community said they didn't want diesel trucks there. So a restriction was put on that. And diesel trucks cannot go there, the kind, you know, the, the 40-foot reefers and the double white, I mean, the double trailers. The only time it's ever used is when there's a, uh, traffic jam on 880, which is a, us, another road, another highway off of Highway 80 itself that we have here. And it's worked very well, for 40 years, it's never been challenged. And it's worked very well. For forty years, it's never been challenged. When Caltrans first had this idea, when it was first proposed, they said it couldn't be done. But it can be. And I think that it's very important to get some of this tra, traffic, truck traffic off of Third Street. It's gonna be narrower, gonna have medium. It would make for a friendlier community. I've gone some places, not so much here in Wyoming, but out of, out of states where some of the streets are so congested in a smaller town. Perhaps like if you've ever been to Taos, New Mexico. It's dangerous to walk around some places because of all the big trucks. They even provide little red flags that you hold up in the air when you cross. Well, currently, as you know, because we took away the light on Clark and Third Street, it's very hard to cross. And when I go shopping at Safeway, I can't even make a left turn because of the traffic coming off the Harney, Harney Street Bridge. But we have very good structurally sound bridges there at Third and, on the, on the, on the south side of the city, and on the north side on Curtis. It's already able, so they can go and go around us. I know that, uh, people will say can't be done. But, I think it's one way to eliminate some of that traffic and making more pedestrian and business-friendly on Third Street. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Brett Glass.
Welcome Brett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, and my name is Brett Glass and I have a particular stake in what happens here because my family owns a property, a, a building in downtown where parking is a big concern. People have declined to rent space in the building because of the issue of parking and so we would really like to see some relief from the parking problems. Every single space we lose is six or seven frustrated people per day cruising downtown trying to find a space. And so, anything we can do to reduce that number would be tremendous. A couple of things I'd, I'd like to mention. First of all, with all of the talk of one-way couplets, I don't know if this is off the table, but I'd like to find out if it's possible to bring it back. There hasn't been talk about a Third Street and Fourth, and Fourth Street one-way couplet. Um, even though the streets are ideally suited for that, if you go down to Denver and you look at the, uh, one-way couplet on Broadway and Lincoln Avenue, um, you have two streets, they're actually different widths, just like, uh, Fourth, uh, Third Street and Fourth Street are. One has more residential, one has more business. It works very well to move traffic through that area. It's a vibrant neighborhood, it's wonderful. Um, it's something that we could, might wanna consider as a model and see if we can get YDOT to go along. As a side benefit, I know this, they're concerned about cost. We would get one more street being a state highway and therefore we would get it plowed at, uh, at, at state expanse, which might be nice. But in any case, um, if we did do that, we might wanna go from, say, Custer Street all the way up to Harney where people could swing over and get back, uh, back, uh, back to the viaduct. Because, well, that would provide a nice, long, continuous area. And, and only by doing this can we really get a lot more parking. Um, we, it, we simply have to have more street in order to get more parking. And, uh, you know, as was mentioned before, the best way to do that is to have more one-ways. That is perhaps the best resource we have in terms of being able to get more. Couple of other minor things. I don't know if this is possible, but one thing you might wanna consider for bicycle access, which, uh, which Council Gabriel mentioned, is we might consider doing something with the alleys. The alleys downtown are in desperate need of repaving and repair anyway. Maybe we could make a route for bicycles there. Another thing I'd like to consider is, uh, having loading zones downtown. We now have more residents downtown. Our building has residents in it who have trouble bringing, you know, finding a parking space within several blocks, so they need to unload their groceries. We should have some short-term loading zones where the businesses and residents alike can unload things quickly, just long, ju, just be long enough there to be able to get out of the way. Instead of having to double-park or just not be able to, to find a place to go. So anyway, those are, those are all the ideas that I, you know, I wanted to present immediately. I'm sure you're gonna hear a lot more. I, I hope that, I hope this will be a very interactive and public process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Steve Grabowski.
Welcome Steve.
Hi there. Uh, I go, I have a, I also have a stake. We've had a building downtown, uh, for thirty years now, and we've been downtown for forty-two, and my family's been here for a hundred and forty-five years. I would say that, uh, adding traffic, adding parking between, um, Garf, Garfield and what, Custer or Sheridan on First Street, it'll probably help Rob. Of course, I don't know if he's short on parking anyway, it's a big lot over there to begin with. But, it's not going to help the businesses downtown that are on Second, uh, and Third, the ones who lose parking on Third. It's so far away, it's not even considered. And we've got a parking, big parking lot. And I see, I hope I don't ruffle any feathers, but our biggest problem is employees and some businesses who just don't understand parking in front of their businesses. Happens every day. Some of them are there all day long. And then you have people who went out drinking and they're not gonna drive home because, you know, of what, and they'll leave their car there for two days. And then when parking enforcement comes downtown, um, some businesses may be looking out the windows and they say, "Ah, here they come." And they go move their cars, or they talk the enforcer out of the ticket. Tickets should be for us businesses mainly. That's, we don't wanna, we don't wanna persecute the shoppers. I have a possible solution that I don't wanna let out of the bag, but I'll, I'll put it down on paper. I hear a lot of, um, a lot of fables. I hear things like, "Oh, trucks are going sixty-five miles an hour up Third Street during rush hour." Don't you know that's impossible? People stopped at the lights alternately. I hear, "Well, you have to wait through a light." I had to wait through a light the other day. It's the first time I've had to wait clear through a light in probably the last five years. We do not have a traffic problem in downtown Laramie. I'm sorry, we really don't. As for bikes, I'm sixty-seven years old. I can get from my, my house on the far end, on the far corner of Labonte Park downtown, much faster than I can get in with a car. I've done it in a little over four minutes. Usually takes about seven by car. All you have to do is follow the rules of the road. Bikes are supposed to ride on the right side, not the left, and not on the sidewalks. And it seems like nobody pays any attention to any of this. It's not difficult at all for me to go down Third Street or Second Street or First Street on a bike. Not hard at all. And crossing the road on, on foot, you, you don't stand there for ten seconds and, and the cars get tired and then they go. Uh, you, you have to be a little bit assertive, act like you're gonna go make eye contact and cross the road. This idea that Third Street is a huge barrier that nobody can get across is, uh, I, I don't understand it. If you're handicapped, you're still gonna have trouble getting across, even with all this new stuff. Bulb-outs, I don't know. How are we gonna, how are the trucks gonna make deliveries to the restaurants, once this happens? That's gonna be difficult. I'm ready to keep the trucks out. How are we gonna supply the restaurants, if we don't let trucks come through here? Now, another thing I run into is a lot of people in this town, I'd say probably thirty percent of the town, didn't even know where downtown is. One of the doctor gives, uh, Dr. Schaefer will give somebody a prescription and they bring it to come down and see me and they walk in the door. They've lived here for five years. It'd be some elderly couple. They say, "Has this been here all along?" Talking about downtown. They say, "Yes, it has." Well, you come down Grand and you turn right or you turn left to go, you know, north or south on two-eighty-seven, and you don't go past that. Well, now we're gonna tell them when they're coming north, is it, "Oh, Gar, Grand, that looks interesting." Iverson, that, that looks interesting. No left turn. Uh, no left turn. I said, "Oh shucks, I'll just keep driving." Downtowns are where they are because two major arteries came together. That's why they put them there, cause there's traffic. So let's not say we don't want traffic. It's tough enough getting business downtown as it is. And there's some wonderful places, and they get ignored and nobody sees them, they dry up, people have heart attacks, and the businesses are gone. If anybody remembers the Fabulous Fifties Diner, amazing place. We got some amazing businesses that are, uh, scrap tree.
Mr. Grabowski, it's five minutes, so you, you go ahead and wrap up your thoughts.
Oh, you bet.
Time's up.
Just some amazing places and some amazing prices. And all everybody knows about is, uh, the Walmart area. We got a lot going for us and, uh, let's not completely cut it off. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
Mr. Mayor, um, the point was brought up that it's a little bit difficult to come up and put your name on the list because of the amount of room that we have in. So, I just wanted to point out that, um, if they don't wanna come up and put their name on the list, that you will call them
I will.
from the audience as we finish up with the speaker.
Once the list is completed, I will, by the raise of hands, we'll continue to hear from everyone, anyone that wants to speak. Do we have someone else on the list?
Yep, we have Jerry Schmidt.
Jerry? Jerry. Welcome, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Schmidt. Um, I, that's who I am, so I don't have anything else. But I've lived here since about, uh, Jeanetta and I moved here about in the mid, uh, nineteen-nineties. And we own a, a building downtown where Jeanetta has a antique business in there, two-oh-seven on Second Street. I have been working with, uh, the DDA and Main Street and some other city committees since about, uh, two thousand and five, two thousand and four, two thousand and five. And I've been on different committees and that kind of thing. And one of the reasons I do that is because I think there's a lot of people, volunteers mostly, and also people who have a job in the, like for Main Street, Trey and, and Carley, and also city staff who really work hard to make the downtown more of an asset than it already is for the entire community. And we just keep building it and strengthening it as an asset for the entire community. So when I look at the downtown, I look at it as more than just a place to find a parking spot. I look at it as a, as something that has some character and a community, a lot of things go on down there and, and that kind of thing. I also look at it as a place that we share with the whole community. We do that through parades that go downtown, through the town, three or four times a year. We do it with events that we have out on the streets and on sidewalks and around the town. It's our way at downtown of sharing the whole, the downtown with everybody else down there, and having a good relationship and a good connection with the community as a whole. So, um, since I moved here, I spent about ten different studies and analysis and assessments and plans done over the years and things like, um, the, um, just to name a few, downtown streetscape master plan, Laramie Bicycle Facility Master Plan, City of Laramie Comprehensive Plan, Unified Development Code, Third Street Project Land Use Transportation and Landscape, and the Downtown Development Plan. And what I see in those, they all move us toward having a common vision where we can all see things together. And they, and they bring in new stuff and, and hang on to the old stuff and the old ideas that were, that were brought up before. And so, I'm in favor of what we're planning to do on Third Street and the bulbits and the designs on that, cause I've seen that, if you look in some of those studies, that idea of doing that came up in plans before. And it's been thought out and argued about, it's still kinda controversial and that kind of thing. And, um, but man, it blew me away to hear about one-way streets. I haven't heard that before. And, so that's my biggest concern. I can't buy off on that right now. I appreciate the technical, um, um, things that were, that are being considered to give us more parking and that kind of. Sort of sounds to me like most of the parking we gave would be on one end of the downtown or the other end of the downtown. But, one of the things I kinda like about the downtown as an asset for the whole community is its historical character. Most of the buildings down here were built in probably between sixty and a hundred and twenty years ago. And it's when our town, um, established its look and the way it is, and we still have that today to do things and to live in and enjoy and do things with it. To me, the one-way, this is my feeling. The one-way idea is like a disrespect for the history and the character of that town. I also wonder, one of the things we do to share our downtown with the whole town is the parades. Are they affected by the one-way and the, the things that we add, uh, in having the one-way? The other one is events that we have, like during Jubilee Days and that kind of thing. How do we close off streets one way over here and one way over there? Is it gonna be just as easy as it was? These are things I don't entirely understand very well. And I, and listening to the engineer presentation, I can see there's, there's a lot of technical consideration about roads and parking and that kind of thing, and I'm having trouble getting that along with me. Maybe it's just cause I'm old. But anyway, I'm having trouble, uh, buying into that. I do think a one-way speed up the traffic. I don't care what the sign says, people are gonna be hustling their way through because it's one-way. I do think it's a problem for bikers. Bikers on the one-way has to, and he works over here on the other way, he has to go around the block and come back on the other way to get over there. That is, that's gonna be a big factor in January and February for a lot of people who use bikes year-round. And our shoppers are also bikers. And, um, it isn't just people and cars, it's also people who ride bikes. And that's a, uh, anyway.
Mr. Schmidt?
I can't buy off on it. I'll use up my time.
You have five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for all you've done for the community.
That's all we have on the list, Mr. Mayor.
If you'll raise your hand, I'll let you come up and make your comments. Also remember, these cards, fill out your comments, there's a box here, there's a box downstairs. And we'll, you know, if, if you fill out these cards, just drop them in these boxes, we will gather the information from that. You know, this meeting again is to listen to your comments, to your ideas. Anything that you have that would help us to, uh, focus on what, you know, the most benefit can be for all of us, let us know what that is also. Any hands for anyone that wants to make comments? In the doorway, would you come forward, please? And welcome. And give us your name.
My name's Darcy Kite.
Okay, thank you.
It seems to me like there's a lot of ways that our money could be better spent. I know that in Fort Collins, they have actually lowered the train speeds to help so that the buildings don't crumble. Um, which is a problem here. They've even had the back of altitude crumble at one time because of the trains. I think a lot of the foundations are not real strong. As far as the parking's concerned, I think that we have enough parking. The problem is, is that we don't have police patrolling and giving tickets out. A lot of this parking is getting taken up by the tenants, and we promoted all this building upstairs and putting in loft apartments, and they're the ones that are taking up a lot of the parking. Yes, some of the businesses and the owners park outside. Um, I assume that a lot of them have parking in the back. And if their employees can park there, then they better handle it accordingly. Um, so I really think that parking violations and monitoring that, and possibly even having an escalating parking ticket. You know, if you've had one in so much time, I, I don't know what the statutes are, are, say about that, but I think that it very well could be. Um, I watch often and I'm wondering why more people aren't hit downtown. People speed through there like you can't believe. That also needs to be better monitored, and it would help us tremendously if the speed got lower to twenty. Main Street has done numerous studies, and anybody that, any towns that have had one-way streets often fail. I believe that Cheyenne is getting ready to go back and get rid of their one-way streets. They, they've tried and tried and tried to make the downtown come back, and they can't. And a lot of it's because of their one-way streets. So, there's a good indication. Um, I know after driving through from California all the way to Ohio, looking at all these towns and they're just desolate. I mean, we're so lucky. We already have a virus downtown. We just need to take care of what we've got. I'm also afraid that you go in and you start messing with the streets. Some of these sewer systems, he already said, some of these buildings are hundreds of years old. You're gonna get yourself into a real mess with money if you start messing with all that stuff. So I think it's gonna escalate. I, I, I don't really see who's benefiting from this. And if it's to add parking, it doesn't seem to me like much parking's getting added, except on either end of town. When in fact, if we had people that were handing out tickets for parking violations, they would, there would be turnover and people could find parking. So, um, I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
I think this stays here. Alright.
Thank you.
Back, in the back, yes. Back, in the back, yes, come forward.
You have them way back in the corner.
Back in the corner, did, did you put your hand up again in the corner? After her, would you please come forward? Thank you. Welcome.
Your Honor, Mayor Shumway, Council. My name is Sarah Brown Matthews. I'm a Laramie girl, born and raised here. I have two suggestions that I just wanted to share. I spent some time in Moscow, Idaho, doing some extended schooling and rented an apartment that was a loft apartment in downtown. There was some sort of regulation, I don't know any, any of the details, where any of us that had downtown apartments, the landlords were required to provide parking spots. They weren't necessarily adjacent to the buildings, they were often far away. But it gave us a place to store our vehicle long-term. Possibly with some of the suggestions for outlying parking that have come forward, maybe something like that could be integrated, that there, there could be some long-term parking because we do want downtown residents, but a place for them to, to park that works beautifully. I also am a real advocate for us really carefully considering the bike lane issues. I have elderly knees that I'm working on, but do have concerns about doing the shared bike lane here in, in the community. I tend to avoid those because I just don't trust that people really pay attention to them, especially people that are getting in and out of cars, don't necessarily see the bikers. So I would love to see some solutions that are more bike-friendly in the downtown area. And then the third question that I have is just simply whether or not there's been any consideration for, for parking in the center of the street on Second Street rather than on the, on the sides of the street that might offer more space. And I was just doing simple math based on what the engineer suggested. My preference would be that we do extend First Street, the one-way street, and add that additional parking that makes sense to me. But having one-way streets on the other major corridors, either east and west or north and south, don't necessarily make sense to me at this time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Sarah. And then in the back. And by the way, while she's coming up, I want to thank everyone for the manner in which you've listened and the attentiveness. And I think this has been a very beneficial meeting, not only for us, but also I think for all of you to hear each other. Again, we'll stay here and listen for all the ideas that come forward. Yes, if you could give us your name, please.
Yeah, I'm Joan Martindale. I wrote an email yesterday to the council members. And I appreciate the responses that I did receive. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of, couple of points that I made to the council that we bought our buildings downtown because we love Laramie and we love being able to live in a town that we live in. It's a wonderful place to live. I've lived several other places, and this is by far the best one. Laramie is a great, we have a great vibrant downtown right now. And our businesses do really need as much exposure as we can give to them. The two-way roads, we get traffic going both ways. With a one-way road, you're going to cut our exposure in half. They have done studies where if a person cannot see the spot where they want to go shopping, they will not park. They won't, they won't park in another spot and then come back to where they want to shop. For instance, you go look at the big malls, J.C. Penney's sign, they'll park at the end of the parking lot, but they can see that sign. A lot of people get really frustrated with the parking downtown. And I know that you don't want to talk about the enforcement of parking, but that is the number-one problem that we have downtown. I've been working downtown, I worked in downtown in the late 70s, early 80s. We had parking meters. The parking meters would just get plugged. I worked downtown on the corner of Grand and Third. And everybody would go out and just plug their meter, and they'd park all day, the same thing we have now. There's a two-hour parking enforcement that could be done. And you would benefit from it as a city, you know, the coffers would benefit from it. All of our businesses would benefit from having more enforcement. It'd be great to have more parking spots. But I don't think that we want to have a trade-off of half the people going by our business for those spots, you know? If we could just get some enforcement on a regular basis, like Brian suggested, it keeps those cars moving. Those people will eventually figure out, this is costing me a lot of money, you know? If somebody's parked there all day and we had enforcement, a two-hour spot, they could have four tickets on their car. That's $40 in one day. Now, if the city would do that, pretty soon people are going to start moving to the all-day parking lots. So I respectfully request that we get more enforcement downtown on a regular basis and that I shouldn't have to call and ask for enforcement on my road. I don't think that's my job to do this police job, you know? Because that puts me in a bad spot with my neighbors. So that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Yes.
Council members, my name is Ann Brand, and I have Ludwig Photography on the corner of Iverson and Third. And I would just like to bring to everyone's attention, we may have all been thinking it, but I'd like to really point out inclement weather. You know, Denver, Colorado, right now is 20 degrees warmer than we are probably this evening. And it really will affect the traffic pattern by the downtown businesses if I have to walk so many blocks to my destination because of one-way streets and parking. I think it'll affect Laramie quite a bit. And then the other thing I look at is in agreement with parking hasn't become a new issue. So while our population has grown, I have an Associated Press article from 1962 about a woman who took my mother downtown, they were sorority sisters, and dropped her off and said she'd drive around the block. And then she didn't get around the block. And that was when Laramie's population was minuscule, people didn't drive as much. So I am very concerned about cutting visibility to the businesses and don't feel that it may be necessary at this time.
Thank you, Ann. Yes. Welcome.
Chief Mayor and Council, my name's Rob Harder. My wife and I own a couple of businesses downtown, and we're also residents downtown. So yeah, I spend a lot of time downtown, I observe a lot. And I guess what I will say is, you know, there have been studies that have been done that show that as far as how downtown is, it's not really that big of a parking problem. And so it has been said at times that it is a walking problem. It's all a matter of perspective. But from what I gather and from what I see, a lot of what people want is accessibility. I don't feel like one-way's going to help that. I think people are going to be upset with the accessibility of one-ways. And as it's been said earlier today, a lot of the businesses that really are affected by parking issues are those that are in the core, where you can't really add the parking. So I guess I'll reiterate what some of the other business owners downtown have said. I feel like we really need to start seeing enforcement. I feel like the only way is to educate people on where the parking is, especially those that park all day, so that they are walking. So that those that want to come down and shop somewhere for an hour and don't have a lot of time and are really counting the parking front of that business, there's not someone that's just been parked there all day. And then I guess as a side note, as someone that lives downtown, I feel like it would be nice if we look at enforcement, that we look at the Sunday and Monday night parking restrictions. Because I know for those of us that live downtown, it's very frustrating to get those tickets, knowing that generally, street cleanup and snow removal does not happen from 2:00 to 6:00 in the morning on Monday and Tuesday morning. And a lot of time, people are parking where the cleaners are going and the snow removal is. And I just don't feel like it's a fair way to do it because it's not really enforced properly, nor is the service there that the signs say. That's all I got. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor and Council, my name's Tom Hembry. I represent Metromon, 4027, 407 South Second Street. We're a big contributor to the problem, I think. We, we have 40 employees. We work, some, some of us a lot of hours, and we park in the downtown area. I think working with Laramie Main Street and, and the city, we could, we could get 40 parking spots if you could tell us where we could park. I don't think it's enforced well downtown. I, I want to publicly apologize to Jeff Dodds. I think our, our business affects his business because some of our employees park. And I grew up in Rollins, Wyoming. My family had Carl's Clothes Shop at the corner of Fifth and Cedar for 40 years. And Rollins changed their downtown area, they changed the traffic flow, and it affected the businesses down there. One-way streets in small communities, people won't, won't know about your business. They won't come back to your business. I, I think we're not in favor of, of the one-way. But we're certainly in favor of working with the city and, and the Main Street groups to, to find us some places to park. Now, we, we have a high-energy group, we have a lot of bicyclers, so not all 40 of these people drive. But there's times of the year that you, we all know that you don't ride a bicycle either. So we appreciate the forum here and the council willing to listen to us. And we, I'd be happy to kind of, kind of help solve it in a, in a different way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, please come forward.
Mayor and City Council, my name's Jeff Dodds. I have Dodds Shoe Company at 401 South Second. Thanks for taking the time to listen to my comments. We've been downtown for 55 years, and we've seen quite a number of changes over that period of time. In fact, I have a postcard in my office of Second Street as a four-lane street going through downtown. And it has changed quite a bit with the diagonal parking, which I think has been a great addition. Several decades ago, my family was involved in the efforts to remove the parking meters downtown so that customers wouldn't have to pay to, to come downtown and shop. I applaud the, the city's efforts and Main Street's efforts to beautify downtown. I think that that is a, an ongoing project that needs to continue to happen. But I don't think that one-way streets are the answer. One-way streets are a hassle. They're a hassle in every community that I drive in. It makes it difficult to get where you're going. And especially if you're from out of town and you don't know where you're going. You say, I need to go over there, but the one-way street makes you go this way and do all kinds of things that you normally wouldn't have to do. We need to make certain that it's as easy to navigate the downtown as we can. And I think one-way streets does exactly the opposite. It's an inefficient way to travel. I also have, well, I've spoken, I've gone up and down my block and talked to my neighbors to get their opinions on it. And I haven't talked to one person that thinks that this is a good idea. In fact, unanimously, they all thought it was a bad idea. Some of those people have gotten up and spoken to you already. Customers need a, a place to park. I'm in total agreement with the people that have spoken before me that there is virtually no enforcement down there. I can tell you that when I see the traffic citations being written or tires being marked, it is amazing the number of spaces that free up for two or three or four days after that effort. And, you know, it frees up a lot of parking, and, you know, that would go a long way. We need to keep those spaces turning over so that when people do come downtown, that they do have a place to park. I have a few other concerns as well. I have driven First Street on my way to work almost every day for 25 years. And almost every day, I have bicycles coming straight at me, going the wrong way against traffic. People are not going to go an additional block on their bike so that they can make sure that they're going the right way down the street. It's also narrow. I don't feel comfortable going much more than 15 miles an hour down that street. And these one-way streets are going to put a great deal of pressure on First Street, you know, if we do the one-way couplets. You've also got a pedestrian bridge that dumps off there. A lot of people coming over from the west side, crossing that street. You've got buildings that come out very close to the corners, and it makes it hard to see around them. And people have a tendency sometimes to either not completely stop or just simply run that stop sign. I also see people, numerous people, every week going the wrong way down that one-way portion of Garfield in an attempt to get to a parking space or they just simply don't see it. So I think we need to be very careful in that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dodds. Yes, in the back. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Nancy Waddell. I don't have a business downtown, but I love downtown. And the one-way streets will be a disaster. In fact, if you do that, you won't have a parking problem because people won't be parking downtown, except to go to restaurants. And I worked in preservation in the 90s for 25 years. In the 90s, Main Street knew that they were a disaster. And somebody mentioned they're really bad in a small town, and they will be horrible. The Fourth Street is a disaster too, because that is a residential area on the south side. And if you start screwing around with that with one-way streets, that will speed up traffic, somebody else said it. Doesn't matter what the speed limit is. People already go too fast on Fourth Street. And, you know, I agree, it probably is enforcement that needs to be done. Because it's just ridiculous that you would not have enforcement. That's the main thing. And if there is such a parking problem, why doesn't the city consider a parking structure? That way, at least, you would get employees of the downtown that, somewhere to park. So I just, I just don't understand this with the two-way streets. I think it's a horrible idea. I like the Third Street traffic calming. That, I think that is needed because unlike, somebody mentioned, Third Street is really, it's not inviting at all for any pedestrians. And if the corner ever gets fixed up, there will be, there's a lot of opportunity. And that really needs to be, that is such a barrier. It's, it's more than just a, it's a psychological barrier too, because that is the main, that's a highway. And that's what you feel like down there. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Council, thank you for everybody being here. My name is Alex Shea. My wife and I own a couple of businesses downtown. And I, I'm hearing all these comments, and I got to be honest with you. Before I came, I wanted to have an open mind. I wasn't exactly sure exactly what I was going to be hearing tonight. And I certainly appreciate the, the presentation. But what keeps coming into my mind are, are my customers. You know, for the last probably three years, I have so many people from Cheyenne, so many people from Fort Collins coming up. And Kristen Hedley, our, our manager at Curiosity Shop, is sitting here as well. She can, she can vouch for this. I have so many people from Fort Collins saying, you know, I love Laramie. It reminds me of the way Fort Collins used to be. It's so easy to get around. It's so fun to be able to come down and walk these streets. Yeah, parking can be a challenge. We have got some serious issues for especially our elderly customers. You know, they're going to drive by. If there's not a spot right in front, they're going to come back, hopefully. But I also want to just remind you of one thing. It's the internet age, right? It's awful easy for somebody to stand in my store and click on Amazon and buy the exact same product. They don't have to be in my store. They can't find a spot? Hey, I'll just buy this on Amazon from the comfort of my own home. So these are the challenges that I face. But what I come back to all the time are those customers who say to me, this town is exactly the way Fort Collins used to be. This town is so much easier to get around in, in Cheyenne. So after sitting here and listening to some great comments, you know, I have to say that at this point, I couldn't support one-way roads either. that at this point, I couldn't support one-way roads either. But one other thing I'll tell you, this is our great challenge. We have to be very, very careful when it comes to how we're going to deal with ticketing customers. I'm all for ticketing people that park in front of their businesses. I got to be honest with you, I don't get that. I really don't. I really don't understand it. But, like Jerry said, I don't want to ruffle any feathers either. But at the end of the day, we've got a group in this community that support downtown without a doubt. They're going to come downtown, they're going to find a place to park, and they're going to make it work. We have other folks, if we're constantly ticketing them, if they're there for three hours and they've been shopping for three hours and they get a ticket, it leaves a real bad taste in their mouth. This is the challenge I think we really have. How do we deal with that? How do we enforce it without upsetting the public? And I think that's a huge challenge. I'm not offering any solutions, but I certainly would love to be a part of whatever group gets together to talk about that, because that's one thing that I always say. We talk to customers all the time. They come in, I'll tell you, the only thing that keeps Curiosity Shop open or Sweet Pickles open is customer service, and the way that we treat folks, I firmly believe that. And I think everybody downtown, we've got, we've got great businesses. Everybody's told you that. We've got great businesses. We want to be public. We want people to know to get to us, but we have to be willing to enforce each other as well. We can't let somebody come in, because now downtown, we don't have just retail and just restaurants. We've got all these businesses that have moved downtown that bring their employees. So, when we've got folks that are parking right out in front of places, you know, this is a real issue for us, because we have the first five spaces in front of our business taken up all the time. That's a real challenge. It's a challenge for the customers. It's a challenge for the businesses. But what I don't want to see is us all of a sudden ticketing, 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 because I think it could come back to bite us a little bit. So, we have to be careful. That's really all I wanted to say. I wanted to remind you, thank you guys very much for everything. Thank you guys for the presentation. That's my time, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Yes, in the back? Welcome.
Hi. My name is Isabel Nichols, and my husband and I own one of the buildings downtown. And I have to first correct one thing. A lot of businesses downtown have little, if any, parking at all in the back of their buildings. Our building doesn't have a single spark apart in the back, and we have apartments upstairs as well. It was designed to be, um, it's designed actually to hold quite a bit of the Wagner Building, which means that we've got a lot of floors above to fill. And so, there is no other option other than faraway places to park. So, I really think that having at least First Street be much farther and getting all the extra parking spaces there as a one-way, since it's already part of a one-way, that I'd like to see more of it be a one-way. But the problem with doing that, as most people said, is since you're not going to be parking next to your place, it's a lot, it's a hassle for a lot of people who want to use those businesses and who need a place to park farther away, but they can't, like, load right now, unload their stuff, and get their stuff into the building. They can't just swing by and, say, pick up cake from a shop. They can't swing by and just pick up something they've already ordered, or if they've done a lot of shopping, they could, if you had loading zones, set it up so that, yeah, I parked farther away, now I have too much stuff to carry. Can we swing, come by and pick that up? That way, we can get, if we have those loading zones, we can get people to park in those farther-out places. So, right now, people are trying to park really close, not only due to weather, but also due to loading and unloading issues, and having those loading zones plus extra spaces. And also, you have to understand, if you did do the one-way couplets, you would actually be able to park where you could see the building that you're going into, and a lot of people were concerned about not, you know, having parking spaces that close. So, I do think the one-way couplets would be nice, but if people are so against that, at least extend First Street and at least getting those loading zones in there, I think will solve a lot of problems. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Tyler Valentine. I'm the CEO of Laramie Plains Credit Union. I want to speak just briefly on the Third Street medians. You may have seen in the graphic that was presented, my business, Laramie Plains Federal Credit Union, is between Lewis and Clark on Third Street. Our access, though, the only access point is on Clark Street. And so, the, uh, working with city staff was very constructive in moving that median from being through the intersection to being between the block, between Lewis and Clark. And so, I want to thank city staff for their work and efforts to that end. I think it still adds the aesthetic value that goes to the plan presented, but also allows access through that intersection to several businesses on all four corners. So, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make, yes, please?
Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. My name's Gustav Anderson, and I have a couple interests in downtown. But I think we're dealing with three issues. I'll try and address them separately, as I think the city should. The first one being the Third Street medians. My wife and I own Star Wars and Promos, uh, which we do lose some in front of street or in front of our business parking with the plan that we'll go forward, and that is of a concern. But, uh, our customers are awesome, and I think we can convince them to understand the strategy they are to park around. But there's some bigger concerns. The bike lane thing has been mentioned quite a bit. I bike commute, and even right now on Third Street, there's not a lot of room, and when you pinch it down and put that lane of travel right up against the sidewalk, it's going to be a hazard, and I think that needs to be addressed. The other thing that happens is, the way it is right now with a whole eight or ten feet, depending on where people are driving, between the travel lane and our sidewalk, we shovel during slushy snowy days multiple times a day to keep that sidewalk clear. If we move that traffic even closer, then our customers are in the hazard zone, in the supply zone. It still hits the front of our building sixteen feet away, but if we move thirty mile an hour, even twenty mile an hour, traffic closer, we're going to have a major issue with that being a hazard to pedestrians, with traffic going by and splashing water and stuff. And I think that could have a negative impact on the willingness of customers come down. And as, um, Mr. Shea pointed out, we also compete with the ease of opening any smart device and buying that product online, as opposed to supporting our downtown. So, from the median side, I would ask you to look at those things. Regarding the parking thing, and Tom, I thank you for your candor about your employees. We have a vibrant downtown, and I think that's good, and we have challenging problems or challenging issues that we have to address. And it was said that the number-one issue that came up in the survey was parking. Well, everyone has to have a number issue, number-one issue, and we have an amazing downtown. So, our parking issue, I don't think is as big as someone would like to make it out to be. And I'd also say, I don't think it was ever qualified or quantified. Does that mean we have a parking capacity problem? Do we have a parking enforcement problem? Do we have a parking mobility problem? What is that problem exactly? It's our number-one problem, but does that mean everyone's saying the same thing? And I don't think so, and I didn't see any information tonight or before that really says what it is. It sounds like there's some enforcement strategy there, and I think that needs to be dealt with. But I would say, I started a pedicab company, and so I spend quite a bit of time downtown on a pedicab, solving that walking problem. And you would be amazed how many spaces there is always on that four-block core of downtown. I'd be happy to take any one of you downtown. You can ride no charge, as long as you pedal twenty percent of the time. I'll take it for a spin. I've been around those blocks hundreds of times in the last month, and there's not a single time that there's not at least one parking spot down there. And so, I think we do have an educational part that plays in that. And I think we need to let Main Street or the businesses down there work up a strategy or a couple strategies that would allow the businesses that have employees, the businesses that have customers, the businesses that don't, to work together to find solutions that will work for everybody. But I will say, if we don't enforce the ordinances we have, then what's the point of trying to solve a problem if we're not enforcing what we have? And that concerns me, and maybe those ordinances need to be changed, or the enforcement needs to be moved to Main Street or a party that can handle that. Thirdly, the one-way street thing, um, as a couple people have mentioned, riding a bicycle downtown, um, it becomes a challenge with winter and one-way streets could make it more, and yet, a lot of bicyclists do not obey the rules of the road, and they will absolutely ride up a sidewalk or ride up a one-way street to find a safer path of travel. I've ridden on the sidewalks during the winter months because it's just not safe to be in the road, because the plows push the snow to the bike lane. So, it's a little bit hazardous. So, I am guilty there. But I think we need to take a look at the ease of access of our pedestrians, as well as the vehicles, as well as the bicycles, encourage all of those modes, and maybe encourage the bicycles and the pedestrians a little bit more, and get people to do a little bit more of that, that walking. And so, I think we need to look at those three issues as three separate issues. The parking plans that I saw don't add parking in the places we're losing parking. And so, as it's been said, a long way in Laramie seems to be about a block and a half, and that's okay, because that's good for my pedicab business. I'll take you two blocks, no problem. But, but let's look at that. If we're losing parking here and we're putting parking in two and a half blocks away, we're not solving the problem that we don't truly yet understand. So, I would encourage you, can we understand the problem and make sure we know exactly that we are doing the right thing? I mean, downtown is a heart of any community, and before you do heart surgery, you better have a good plan, because you can undo it, but it's going to be painful, and it's going to be tough. And I would imagine that even though you can undo it, and I mentioned extensive signage to manage it, there's a lot of cost and signs that would have to come down. There's a lot of lines that would have to be moved. And as a taxpayer, I'd like to make the decision not thinking it's a really nice, expensive experiment. So, thank you for your time. I'd be happy to be involved in any discussions that go forward, but, um, thank you.
You have one second left, so good timing. Yes, please.
I'm Nancy Sindelar. I own property on Second Street, like a block from downtown, but affected by the pattern. For traffic commission, no, I'm going to study this before I say anything on that. So, I'm talking only as a citizen. The street I'm, the seven-hundred block of South Second, there's enough parking for everyone and a little bit left over. So, we have guests come in. I have two places in front of my property. My neighbor has two. They sometimes put two vehicles there. You want to put diagonal in there, and one, will I still be able to park in front of my property? I have two properties. The other one, parking is even harder, so I keep my car up where I, not where I live, but at the closer to downtown. And also, I have a mid-block driveway that I use. I don't walk very well anymore, so my bicycle's like this oddly configured wheelchair. I use the bike to go one block. I jump on the bike. I'm one of these crazies that rides in the middle of the winter, too. Um, if I don't want to ride my bike, I don't want to be out driving to that stuff either. But I don't want to lose my mid-block driveway. It's just a little one that was made for a carriage, because my properties were built before we had cars. And I don't want to lose that. But I'm also worried about going out. When I've got cars parked diagonally, it's harder for me to see if there's any cars coming. It's a safety issue, and that's, this is just my personal, because of where I own the property. You need me to sign?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May not need mention, but I think there are people downstairs, and of course, if they want to provide a comment.
If there's anyone that's not in the council chambers that would like to come forward, please come to the door and just wave, and we'll bring you up to make public comments. But you better hurry, because it looks like we're about to run out. Mr. Graham Baskin, did you want to make another comment?
Please in just a minute.
Pardon?
Please in just another minute.
I will give you one minute.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just offer up these comment cards.
If you'll do that.
Yeah.
A lot of employees and employers, you know, there's a lot of parking behind Coal Creek and also by the depot that people don't use. A lot of empty spaces there every day, and sometimes my whole block is completely filled up on both sides. A lot of us businesses would donate some money. I hear there's a budget problem when the officer comes down. He said, "We don't have time." I would like to see him in plain clothes, so he's not so obvious, marking those tires and stuff. He said, "We don't have the budget." I'll put up some money, and I think some of my friends here would too. Any hands?
Not many.
And, uh, Laramie is world-famous. People come from all over the world. I have hundreds of people every year walk in from Tasmania and Azerbaijan and who knows where. They're looking for this Wild West woolly, famous, world-famous town. People here don't understand it. We don't, they don't know that it's like that. We don't know where the birthplace of women's rights, you know, any of this. We need to, we need to be able to get them downtown easily.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, in the back.
My name's Mike After. I'm a property owner downtown, and I wanted to talk about First Street primarily. If you drive from University down to Grand Street, that is two blocks of the worst traffic in downtown Laramie. It is slowed down to about ten, fifteen miles an hour, and the people trying to pull out of the diagonal parking, it's difficult to do that. And you're planning on adding more traffic down on that road, and it's not going to be better for the people parking or driving. Also, going down further at Garfield, you've got to make a ninety-degree turn, and then you'll have to make another ninety-degree turn. That's an S curve right there that's going to slow down traffic, and that's, could possibly cause more problems because of the increased traffic. Now, I don't believe that we have a parking problem downtown, and part of the evidence is all the photos that were shown here on your screens, there's tons of parking spaces available. The parking lot on four hundred South Second was, is about half-full most of the time. So, adding diagonal parking on four hundred South First Street next to a parking lot that is half-full just doesn't seem like it's worth it. Also, I have to bring a truck down, a semi-truck down there at least once a month to unload products with a forklift, and for thirty years that I've owned that business and property down there, we'd never had a complaint, never had a problem. By adding the one-way street and the diagonal parking, it's going to shut that down. I'm not going to be able to do it anymore. I have to unload product out of my loading dock on a monthly basis several times, and this is going to inhibit that as well. So, I'm completely against the one-way streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from downstairs that came up that wants to speak? Okay, let's go back to this group. Anyone else in this? Yes, in the back, please come forward.
Say one more thing.
Yes, Joan, thank you.
You all got me fired up.
Yeah, Joan, you get one minute.
Okay. I have customers, Alec was talking about customers who come from all over to shop in Laramie. I have the same customers. I have people from Fort Collins, Denver, Walden. They don't want to go to Fort Collins to shop. They come to Laramie. They come in and they say, "I see that there's a two-hour parking. I'm going to go to lunch. Shall I move, where shall I move my car? Where shall I go to lunch?" And I, we give them ideas, and I say, "Don't move your car." Really? Why not? It's a two-hour parking. I said, "If you are not parked in a handicap spot and you get a ticket, a ten-dollar parking ticket, I will pay that ticket. Bring it back, and I want to pay it for you." And they, they look at me like I'm crazy, first of all, and they say, "Why do you want to do that?" And I tell them, "Because I want to go up to City Hall with my ten dollars and your ticket and put it on the counter and say, 'Thank you for doing your job.'"
Thank you.
Do you know how many tickets I've paid, Mr. Somway?
No, tell me.
Zero.
Okay.
Point taken.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. These people behind me.
Could you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Stephanie Carter.
Okay, thank you.
And I have lived in Laramie all of my life. The people behind me are the ones that support Laramie, obviously. So, thank you for being here, each and every one of you. We have such a beautiful community. It's safe. I decided to raise a family here in Laramie, and my grandchildren are now here. We've got so many things to offer, and I would like to just see more beautification in our little community. It's gorgeous. It's got a romance. It's got... It's got so much to offer for the next generation of a grandchild that is two years old. What we would like to instill in our grandchildren is honesty, um, how to purchase something. And that means, what better way to do it than a small hometown community is such as what we have? I can walk into the curiosity shop with my grandson after going to a movie and pick up a Mother's Day card for my, my daughter and have so much attention, giving my grandson a $5, putting the card on the table and that little two-year-old know that he needs to pay for that card for his mother. Parking, yes, is of an issue. I do agree with the gentleman that was here, I don't see him now, that has 40-plus employees. My dream is to have that someday with the business that I've got. We are in our second generation of a young man, meaning my son, that will probably take over the business. With that said, we have two buildings currently that we physically own and hopefully at one point he will be able to marry, take over the business and have a good living. Beautification is my top priority in speaking today. I would love to see romantic lights, beautiful flowers, trees that bloom and family and friends, like what we've got here today, to take care of the next generation coming forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there anyone else? Yes, in the back. Welcome.
Hello. City council members, my name is Lori Kirk and I own a business downtown and I live downtown. I'm in the 100 block of Old Iverson, so I see, um, a lot of interesting things happen on a daily basis from my store and from my living room window. I have customers that come in from all over the world and they also ask about the two-hour parking and everyone that's in the store on the streets say, oh, don't worry, nobody ever tickets. So it's common within downtown and within the city of Laramie that there is not the enforcement. I have also do the same thing as Joan. If you get a ticket, please bring it to me and I will bring it. And in my 14 years of business, I have never been given a ticket to come down and pay and I would gladly do that. Um, I have been ticketed when I have left my car in front of my businesses, I'm unloading like at 1 o'clock in the morning and gotten a $50 ticket for being overnight, but I don't see it during the daytime. Um, I have witnessed the community service officers come downtown and mark the tires and I have seen certain patrons from across the street, um, come with cleaner and wipe off the tires. And then I will call this, the city non-emergency number and report this and they'll come back and they'll say, there's nothing we can do. Um, I, since I walk the streets of Laramie, um, as a business owner and resident, I try and educate the employees that I see parking downtown, visiting with the employers and the employees to let them know that there are other places to park, um, within a block or two of walking distance and their response typically is, well, I'm not parking in front of the business I work in. So if there's a way that we can educate the businesses downtown to let them know to have the spots available, enforcement would be lovely, um, but also the education to the other, um, businesses that are downtown and the residents. I walk two blocks, um, to where my car is. I would love to see covered parking, would gladly pay, not necessarily stair, but just a little tin over. Um, and I would gladly pay a monthly fee to have my car covered. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yes, in the back. Welcome.
Yes, I'm Janetta Schmidt. I have back of the wagon antiques downtown. Um, I, I think I'm talking to the right group. This hasn't been brought up, but I was in real estate for many years before we came to Laramie. And one of the big things in most of those communities was that the city had the right to demand people to have parking if they were going to put in apartments. And I think that we need some kind of regulation here that would help alleviate the parking problem for the residents downtown. We want them, we need them, but there really hasn't ever been any, any requirement to provide parking for them. And, uh, one other thing I think might help is I've noticed in a lot of the alleys downtown, there's plenty of space. It's just full of junk. And then maybe if we could encourage people to clean up some of that parking area in the backs, in the alleys and then they could rent it to the owner of the, um, piece they wanted to, to rent out to someone else. And that might help to solve the problem. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
And thank you, everybody, for being here.
Let me, uh, before all of you leave, let me just say this. I have, I think there's been a variety of great ideas that's come tonight. The one thing that, that I think touches Mrs. Schmidt and all of us is, we, we have a, a very, what Spence said, a fantastic downtown, but we have some pretty fantastic neighbors too. You, you people have just been terrific and we certainly want to do everything we can to make sure that your lives are, are the very best and make sure that everything goes well and we'll, you know, with the ideas that you have, with all of our ideas together, I think we can come up with something that'd be very reasonable and beneficial for everyone. Now, is there anyone else that would like to say anything? Anyone on council would like to make comments about the process or anything that's come up? Other than, we're not going, again, we're not going to make any decisions, but I think we need to, you know, just reinforce to you that we're listening, that this is important to us and that we'll do all we can to make sure that we have, working with Main Street, working with the businesses and everyone, that we, we come up with something that is, is, uh, beneficial. Anyone on council? Brian, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilor Schuster.
You're fine. Brian is great. I don't, yeah.
Councilor Schuster.
Question, isn't downtown 20 mile per hour?
Not yet.
No, it's not. Okay. I hate to say, as a teenager, I got a ticket on my dirt bike for doing over 20 downtown. So it must've changed sometime. And that was, that was 100 years ago anyway, so, yeah. I laughed when somebody else said about First Street because I've eaten at several restaurants on First Street and I see, and I'll say, the bicycles go in the wrong direction, head on to the cars. Um, the other thing is, I always joked about it. I said, when they're backing up, does that mean they're still going the wrong direction since the car is pointed that way? Because I always thought that was kind of comical to watch people backing all the way down First Street. On this patrol time, I really agree that maybe two hours is too short, but I think we have to leave the two-hour sign, but I think we start patrolling it with a computerized vehicle, that I think it ought to be like maybe once every three hours. So we have that grace period on both sides. So that's one thing I will push for on that. And then loading zone, I'm curious, people can email me on that, but how long would you say is adequate time if we do put in a loading zone area? Please just email those. Don't worry about jumping in on this or put on the comment card would be just absolutely great. And then, one of the things I've heard several times now is renters must provide parking. The UDC says if you build a parking structure now, you must have adequate parking, but downtown has a different UDC than the rest of the city. So that, that parking for renters downtown is really, really different. So I just, I just want to make those comments on things I'd been writing down that, uh, multiple people had talked about. But, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming. And the one thing I really appreciate is everybody was civil. I mean, a lot of people threw different ideas out there and a lot of people said different things, but nobody pointed a finger directly at somebody and said, this person does that, nay. Oh, thank you for being civil. That's one of the biggest things I thought tonight.
Thank you, Brian.
Question?
Mr., um, go ahead.
Um, does anyone know?
Come up to the microphone, if you would, please, Steve.
Right.
I heard something the other day. Does anyone know if there's going to be no parking on Third Street? Or is it just, uh, just by the bulbouts or the?
Bulbouts?
I mean, not the bulbouts, but the medians.
Medians, yes.
That's the only place where parking's going to be eliminated.
Steve, there, there is a, I think we have, uh, in fact, do we, Eric, do you want to address that? I think you probably have the information that Mr. Gumbaski is looking for. Do you, do you have that?
So seven spots lost on the north side with the Clark Street median and 17 spots lost on the median going through the Carney Street intersection, so 24 total.
Okay, thank you. That's not good news. Wish we could keep it all, but, you know, there's, okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, I think that concludes our work session. We appreciate it again, as Councilor Schuster said, the, the way in which you handled this meeting, thank you so much and have a good evening.